Okay.
Hey Kate.
Hello.
So I've got Cal making the motion and who's second?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah, I was just gonna say I vote aye.
Oh, okay. Scott, did you second?
I think Kate did.
Okay.
I'm here Janie, this is Kate. I don't know if you heard that I'm here.
Yes, I just got that, thank you.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Okay, so you got the first and the second then Janie?
I do.
Okay, so then we'll go through the vote on the minutes. Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Heinzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Stroh.
Aye.
Trustee Jackson.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Okay, vote is unanimous, minutes are approved as amended. Which takes us up to the financial reports. Which are the conspicuously not yellow pages of the packet. So, a couple of quick notes in the financial reports. A lot of the lines are pretty much now, as of the March report final. Just by the nature of the situation that we're currently still in. So that is a lot of the revenue lines. You know, not being open, we're of course not taking, nobody's using the photocopier, so nobody's getting charged to make photocopies. You know, there's still some money coming in from non-resident fees, but not as much. Passport fees, we're not doing passports at the moment. Rental fines, not a thing, so. And then, you know, we're not ordering physical materials at the moment. So those lines are pretty well finished as of the end of March. So, a lot of the lines here are pretty well set. If you look to page five of the financial reports, the revenue and expenditure report for the Lake Bluff Village. The third column over provides revenue and expenditure for all funds. And the total revenue in that line is 1,027,840 dollars for revenue and 952,412 for expenditures. So, we will probably have for next month expenditures in the neighborhood of I would, if I had to guess, I'd say around 50,000. With 25,000 then going to reserve, plus whenever we are able to get the 15,000 from the state. That added to it as well. So it should be a total of in the neighborhood of 40,000 headed towards reserve at the end of the year. Still tentative, of course, because we still need to get the numbers for April. Other notes?
Excuse me, miss?
Yes, yes.
You said pending 50,000 from the state, is that what you said?
Well, the 100,000. When we get the 100,000 from the state, 15,000 of that will cover the expense of Angberg Anderson.
Yeah, okay, that's, and that's that, that one expense line, it was so much higher, so.
Yes.
That's that amount of money.
Yep, and so when we, when we get that, that will defer that expense and as such would be added to the, the total amount that would be then able to be added to reserve at the end of the year. Unfortunately, doesn't look like we're going to be likely to get that quite as fast as we had, had hoped. It looked pretty solid to have that here sometime late summer. But obviously the state, all, you know, everybody's got bigger fish to fry at the, at the moment. But hopefully.
But I think we should be consistent and diligent on pursuing that on a regular basis, cordially dropping into their office and saying, you know, this is, we've, we've, we have an expenditure based on this income, so we need to get going with it.
Yep, don't worry, keeping tabs on them.
And Eric, will we get, will we get the whole 100,000 in, in there, or will they spread it out starting late summer? Is that the plan?
Uh, I don't have the details in, in front of me. But my understanding of the way that it would work would be that there would be a a certain percentage that would be received upfront. That we would be sent, and then, yeah, 25, I think. Which is the 25% of the, the total. And then beyond that would be dependent on our providing updates as well as receipts and information as far as what we were doing that they would then verify and reimburse.
Got it.
Which, we've got plenty, we've got plenty to reimburse coming down the pipeline, so I'm not too vexed about needing to complete the extra paperwork.
Yeah, and we actually can go back to the roof expense, or what was it, the the fall roof, ceiling, whatever the heck we did last, last fall, that would qualify. But it should be noted that that grant was made to the foundation. So the revenues are to the foundation, of which 20, or 15 is owed to the library for the consultant fees.
No.
The August paid, August spent on infrastructure and building and so forth.
Actually, my, my understanding is it's to the library, the 100,000.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh.
Because at the time that gosh, that would have been.
But it wasn't the foundation.
Yeah, because it would have been early spring 2019 when we were pestering Julie Morrison's office. And that was still a few months before the final setup of the foundation was in place. So the foundation wasn't
Thank you.
in position yet to take the funds, so it will go straight to the library. But the, the end destination is, is all towards the greater good of the library either way.
Good.
Okay. I should note as, as well that while we have a number of lines that have been you know, come to an early end for the fiscal year, we do have a number of additional expenses that we also did pick up that will be showing up on the financial reports for April when those are circulated in May. And those are chiefly things like the software, Beanstack and CrowdPer. You know, additional things that we needed to acquire in order to succeed in the new digital environment that the library is operating from now.
And Eric, roughly how much are those expenses gonna total? You have any idea?
I believe the first year cost for Beanstack was about 1,200 or 1,300. Eliza, you had talked to the Beanstack folks on that one, so feel free to correct me. CrowdPer was pretty affordable. I want to say that was in the neighborhood of 40 or 50 dollars a month. Is that sound right Martha?
Um, it was 49.99, but we got a nonprofit discount, so now it's 39.99.
Excellent. That's $10 saved for the taxpayers. Oh, go on.
You overestimated just a tiny, but it's about 1,100 dollars for Beanstack.
So it's not gonna, it's not gonna have a major impact on expenditures?
No.
Gonna be less than 10,000 dollars?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
No, we're still trying to very much be careful and conservative in, in what we sign up for. And trying in particular as well to be, think in the long term. And be certain that anything that we do sign up for is gonna be stuff that's gonna continue to be useful. At least for the rest of this 2020 calendar year. You know, it's can be, can be a challenge when we're all sitting, sitting at home and stressed out of our minds, but we're trying to avoid any impulse purchases for things that look like they might just be really cool to play with. We've done a pretty good job on that. So that is pretty much all I've got on the other thing that I would note that's an addition there is that the end of year expenses for some of the database expenses will be a bit larger. We are aiming to purchase a few more audiobooks, e-audiobooks. Pardon me, ebooks and e-audiobooks. That we probably would have otherwise, and we did increase how many copies were available for checkout through Hoopla and Canopy. Again, neither of those will be major expense, you know, huge expenses that are going to push the needle on the final budget substantially. But they, they will be a blip to particular budget lines in April that we'll see. Any questions on the budget? Or on the financial reports?
Kathy, it's Kathy. The village contribution of 85.50. It looks as though that was not, not happened this year, if I'm reading this correct.
We haven't received it yet.
Okay, is that typical, or is it late, or what story in that?
It's typical. Usually what happens is that those funds get added in when the village goes into the process of finalizing things at the end of the year, going into their audit process. So, we, we will receive those, I am still, yet. It's just, we don't, we don't generally get them until the fiscal year is wrapped up unless we specifically ask for them.
Okay, alright, so this is typical.
Yeah, it's typical, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the financial reports? If not, then I would look for a motion to approve.
I so move.
Cal, I'll put you moving.
I move, yeah.
Second?
Kathy, I think you.
Kathy moves, Kathy seconds.
Kathy, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go through the vote then. Uh, trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Heinzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Stroh.
Aye.
Trustee Jackson.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Alright, excellent. Approval is unanimous. And takes us up to the checks. One item that I would draw attention to on the checks that might have caught someone's attention. On page four of the checks, there is a charge for 2,500 dollars to the LinkedIn Corporation. Not for subscription to LinkedIn itself. LinkedIn purchased, I want to say within the last couple of years, one of our databases, which is Lynda.com. Which provides training and instructional resources and videos. So, because LinkedIn is the parent company, they're the ones that show up on the bill. So that's what that one is for. Any questions on the checks?
Eric, can you, this is Janie, can you repeat what, what, what it was that LinkedIn per?
Uh, that was for Lynda.com, which is a database that we offer to the public.
L-I-N-D-A?
L-Y-N-D-A.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Eric, I have a question. It's not really related to the checks per se, but does the library continue to receive all of the articles that it normally receives and are particularly focusing on daily newspapers?
No. And we put a hold on our subscriptions.
And is there a financial implication to that?
Yes. One of the reasons that we had put a hold on the, the newspapers was for the financial side of things. So we're, we're not being charged for stuff we're not receiving, of course. So it might impact you know, when we get the bills on some of them. I, I think we had a couple periodicals that we went ahead and renewed just because we got the bill round about the same time. There, there weren't many days that we had left before the subscription ended, but by and large, what, what we've got there is we'll have a credit for each of the, the papers that we've had on pause. You know, we, we keep about two weeks' worth of newspapers and at, at a certain point after, you know, within just a couple of days of closing, it occurred to us that it is gonna take longer than two weeks. You know, anything that we're putting out there for the patrons right now. You know, we're gonna put it out and then it's just gonna work its way to the back of the pile and then we're gonna recycle it, so why get it?
Would this apply to weekly magazines also?
The magazines we are still getting, those we keep, those we keep longer. So, something like people, we would have you know, six plus months of those for a weekly like that, and for something that was a monthly periodical, we would have probably a year or two's worth in those bins. So since, since those are with us longer and then could be used once the library reopened and there was access to those, we've continued to get them.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, when we get close, when we find out more, kind of what the May status is of business in Illinois, you might wanna just check on some of those newspapers, because I know for residential circulation, if you put something out, I think the Journal, if you put it on for 30 days, it stops. I think New York Times credits everything back, but they all do things their own little quirky way. So you might wanna find out what's, what's going on with those.
Will do.
Especially since it's kind of indefinite.
Will do. Jen is the person who handles periodicals for the library. I'll follow up with her and see what she's heard.
Good.
Other checks questions? Okay, then I would look for a motion to accept the checks and
They are numbered 14352 through 14369, and then 14371 through 14381.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, actually, before we do that, I have one more question.
Fire away.
I'm noticing actually, as I look at this, on 331, we paid 53988 to the Wall Street Journal, so that's one that you might wanna check on, is if you've made the payment, I don't know what period of time that is, but there should be a credit in addition to that, so just so somebody's trying to figure that out.
Yes.
Do they, do they usually just extend on the subscription though, Eric, in, in those cases, as opposed to give you a credit? Or do you?
Well, yeah, the, the, the credit that you receive is, is more papers.
Yeah.
They, yeah, which is, which is fine, we want more papers, but they're not gonna credit us any money.
No, no, but what they usually do is they should tack whatever the credit is onto that, it looks like we've got a new, what, one-year subscription or six months, whatever that is.
Yes.
So they should, so we need to keep track of that down the road, that
Yes, so that we get our earnings worth. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and we'll, we'll make sure that we do.
But to repeat it, Eric, you, you have put these on hold.
Yes.
So the publications have been notified that you don't wanna receive the papers now.
Yes.
Until further notice.
Yes.
Okay.
And we have not been receiving them.
Okay.
Okay, I apologize, I interrupted the process there.
No, quite all right, quite all right. Always, always a good idea to jump in with a question, so if there are no further questions, then I think we were looking for a motion to approve the checks.
I so move that we approve the checks, this is Cal.
Thank you, Cal.
Second, John.
Thanks, John.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Going to call the vote, trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Heinzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Stroh.
Aye.
And trustee Jackson.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Okay. Excellent, that takes us up then to committee reports. The committee that met this past month, there was just the one that was Human Resources, which met yesterday. Scott, that would be you as the committee chair for that, would you like to give an update?
We, we met last night and reviewed Eric's annual evaluation. I think I got some good input from Kathy and Cal, I appreciate that. So we made some small revisions to the evaluation, I think. Other than those small revisions, the committee was pretty unanimous in agreeing with what was in the evaluation. I'll say, top line, it was a very positive evaluation as everyone on the HR committee agreed that it really has been a very positive year for Eric. Areas that were identified as opportunities for improvement, we've seen improvement, and there were a couple of areas identified for further growth. The one area that we did not conclude the discussion on had to do with compensation. I reached out to Bill this afternoon, Bill and I had a conversation and agreed that we would not come to a final decision on that issue until Bill and I sat down with Eric and looked at Eric's compensation in the context of its impact on the overall budget and the staffing budget. So other than that, we are pretty much completed with the evaluation process. And we should be able to get the salary issue resolved before the end of the month. So, we're actually on schedule.
Excellent. And it's my understanding that I'll be looking to set up then a finance and HR joint committee meeting to discuss that.
Yes, please.
Will do. Was working on that before the meeting got started and I just ran out of time to get the doodle poll set out to everybody. So, that is HR. Are there, is there a committee report from any of the other committees?
Didn't finance meet?
No, I think we, we, we met before the last meeting. Meet this time.
Yeah, that finance, finance met, I think the that was the Wednesday before the, the whole world went sideways.
And that was basically to approve the budget?
Yes. Yeah.
Which we then brought to the board and
Yep.
All get done, okay.
Do you know have, do you remember the date of that?
I wanna say it was March 11th. There about, I can take a look at the website real quick.
No, it was, it was March 11th.
Thank you.
Very good, good memory.
Well, the the, 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 the date that the library essentially closed down to the public, sort of is lodged in my brain, so it's a it's a handy, it's a handy reference point. Okay, if there, if there's nothing else from the committee reports, then we would move on to new business.
Just to clarify, the library closed to the public on the 12th or the 13th?
The last day that we were open to the public was March the 13th. And then the we closed at the end of business on Friday the 13th and did not open on Saturday the 14th.
Gives new meaning to Friday the 13th.
Yes, it does. Um, as, as far as Fridays the 13th that I've experienced, that was certainly a corker. Okay. Jumping over to the new business. Two of the three items there are pretty much informational. The, the first one in terms of the, the items there is staff pay. For this item, I'm not seeking any action from the board at this time. The policy as it's currently written provides the director with the authority to extend emergency pay to part-time staff members when the library has closures for emergency reasons. So closures that are in reaction to events, usually it's snow. This time, obviously, it's not, and because it's an unusual situation, I have kept in touch with Kathy, in, in particular, I believe I also talked to Cal and touched base with her as vice president as well. Wanting to have the board provide some input and, and feedback as we went along with this atypical situation in terms of how it was handled for staff pay. So the, the process is.
I'm sorry, can you, can you provide a little bit more clarification for those of us who have not been privy to those meetings?
Um, sure, they were, because they happen outside meetings, they, they were primarily conversations between myself and trustees. I can send out the detailed information to you if you'd like as well. So the decision basically came down to whether we would continue to provide emergency pay for part-time staff members past the, the five days that was specifically provided for within policy. And given the unusual nature of the, the situation, my recommendation was that we should go ahead and, and do that. Which was what we, what we did. The process then over the.
I'm sorry, for, for, I'm, I'm sorry, for how long are we doing this? Because, so I obviously work in entrepreneurship and innovation, I'm working with a lot of small businesses that are laying people off. So I'm just thinking, again, putting myself in the shoes of our taxpayers who may have been laid off from small businesses. That they aren't getting paid, so why are part-time employees being paid? I think that's a fair question.
Certainly. And the Um, and the, uh, the, the, the course of, um, of things has, has been that really the emergency pay covered the timeframe, from when we closed down up until we've really started, uh, fully gearing up the, uh, all the online and digital services that we're providing. So, um, most all the staff is, um, engaged again and working and being paid for the hours that they work. Um, so we just have, um, a couple of very part-time folks, um, some shalvers who we have not, um, have not re-engaged and they haven't, uh, gone back onto that hourly pay, uh, system.
Okay, so then who are the part-time workers that are still being paid? Cause no offense, and Eliza and I have had this conversation offline, but there's nothing on the Lake Bluff pub, public library website that is there for the public. And I understand that you're using social media. Uh, I've seen all the emails that have come out. However, that is not inclusive. Not everybody is on social media. So if you can explain to me why part-time workers are like actually working or how they're working, that would be great. But I'm just telling you right now that a lot of people are being laid off. Like my students, both of their parents are being laid off. They might not go back to college. Like people are really suffering and if we are not following how other people are kind of reacting to this, we may face a backlash. And so I really want to understand the position we're in so that I personally don't fake, face a backlash from our community for things that I have not approved.
Certainly. Well, um, I would to start, uh, I would note that there are a lot of things that staff are engaged in and working on. There was a list that was provided, uh, as part of the board, uh, packet. Uh, I do think that that's, um, pretty substantial and reflects quite a bit that's being done. Um, I do, uh, respectfully disagree, uh, that there isn't information that's being provided, uh, to the public from the website. Um, there is, uh, information as far as, uh, resources that are available, uh, during the closure. Uh, the, the seed library resources on COVID-19, we have the temporary cards that are being issued. Uh, we do have the links available to, um, email updates as well as the social media that are available through the website. Um, we also have, um, pitched in and are assisting with the, uh, Lake Bluff Strong initiative and a lot of the information that we've been pulling together, the resources that we have been, um, putting together is now available through that as well. Uh, we have staff members that are engaged in, um, you know, ongoing projects that can still be done, uh, during this time. So in addition to all of the contact that folks are working on.
I, I get all that, Eric, and I don't mean to talk over you. I get all that. Our website, we spent money with someone who was going to redesign our website. Our website still has an old logo. We've had this logo, this new logo as long as I've been on the board. We paid somebody to redo the website. The old logo exists. I get that that's a minor point, but it speaks to a bigger issue of our website not being up to date in a time when parents are looking for resources. And look, I get that I'm the only person on the board right now who has children who are in school. I am currently working a full-time job. My husband is in healthcare. His, he is an entrepreneur. We are struggling. Our children do not have any resources from the school that keeps them occupied past 11:00 AM. I would hope that our library would provide something. When I go onto the library to look for resources, there aren't any. And I understand that you are providing things on social media. I am not on the social media. I cannot be for my job. My students cannot find me on social media. So I, I get that you're providing this, but I don't think that you're understanding the gaps that currently exist. And as a parent, as a full-time worker trying to homeschool, this is a very frustrating situation. Look, I get it is for everybody. I get that it's not just me, but I also understand that I'm the only person on the board with school-aged children. And so I think that I need to be the advocate for those in our community who are in this position. It's bad. Our schools are not stepping up at all. We are dying out here. We need resources. And I would love for the library to step up. I would love as a board member to say, this is what our library is doing for you because you aren't getting the resources from your school. And it's not just the elementary school. The middle school parents aren't getting enough resources to get their kids through an entire day. And so parents are trying to keep their jobs so that they can pay their bills, keep their lights on and school their children. It's a, it's a mess.
Okay, the question, this is Scott. So are the schools not doing anything online with the kids?
They are doing the bare minimum and it all varies by teacher. We have one teacher who is doing a great job. We have another teacher who is just kind of pieced out on the whole thing. So I have had to figure out how to educate. I do, I don't want to homeschool my kids. That was never my goal. And so I have had to crowdsource from other people in other states to kind of get my kids going. And so then I reached out to other friends in the, in the community and it's, it really varies by school and it varies by teacher. But I would say the consensus right now is that teachers can provide enough until lunch and then that is kind of all they're, will provide.
I'm not, I'm not downplaying the role that the library could have with this. But isn't this also an issue with the schools? I mean, I, I was under.
They're not, I mean, yeah, no, I get it. I, I mean, yeah, I, yeah. Yeah, I get it. And I, I'm sorry to vent on you guys. It's just, it's, it's very overwhelming. I'm not sleeping. I have nightmares about my kids, like having to go to clown college at this point. Um, yeah, I mean, it's on the school, this school won't listen to anybody. So they're, we're, we're in this predicament. I, I would just like, the only place that I, I have a voice in this community is the library. And so I would love for the library to do more and maybe that's not possible. And maybe we're just in this and, and, and we have to live it. I, I don't know. It's a real shame for the future of our town. I'll say that.
Yeah, and.
That could be brought before the school board?
Yeah, Scott, Scott, um, as, as members of the library board, I think we got to focus on the library board here. Um, this is an extraordinary time for all individuals, all municipalities, every branch of whatever lifestyle we have. So I think we need to look inside ourselves and see what we can do better. And there's always room for improvement. Probably every week Eric and his staff figure out more inventive ways of doing what they can do as distance librarians. So we're all working on that. I'm sure, uh, Eric, you've got some food for thought here on, you know, talking to your staff and seeing what outreach is possible. I do know that through this crisis, Eric has become more and more involved in, um, community links, I'm going to call them. Um, Lake Bluff Strong being the newest one, which is trying to coordinate communication between the schools, the Park District, the library and Gordon. Um, so, and I also know, as a former educator with some connections, uh, and Janie, I'm sure talks to people as well, that there's input from local hospitals, local, uh, the county board, all sorts of people are coming up with problems and attempting to form solutions. So I think we'll all be a better place if we ever have to go through this again. But in the meantime, I'm sure Eric and Eliza and Martha and Jillian can put their heads together and do the best they can. If there's some outreach possible to the principals, that's probably the way to start. Um, and, uh, I know that there's communication through the Lake Bluff, through the, what is it, the village kind of newsletter that comes out. I recently received something from Lake Bluff Strong. I haven't looked on the website of the parks and so forth, but, um, we can always work to do better. The, the initial discussion here had to do with part-time people. So Eric, certainly take a good look at where we are. You and I talked the other day about some folks who aren't even being paid for personal reasons. So, um, it's a big, it's a big lump sum that we don't want to just point fingers at. So let's be able to explain, you know, what we're spending and what we're, we aren't. And I would say every 30 days with, with the situation, it has to be looked at again and again and again. And, um, there can be a board policy. It doesn't mean that we don't bring in bill and finance and HR and, and just talk about this month after month after month. It's, it's very extraordinary. And we have to look at it with extraordinary points of view.
Well, um, a big part of where we're at, uh, with the reality of, of things is that looking at the current situation in terms of library service, um, we're getting rolling with, um, and wrapping up day by day, uh, week by week, um, everything that we're offering digitally. And, um, you know, that is going to continue, uh, to be the reality of the, the services that we're providing, um, at minimum, um, I think through May. Uh, the latest verdict that we, uh, received here, uh, from the state was that they are projecting for the peak of, um, the current outbreak to be, uh, sometime in the middle of May. I, looking at the numbers last week, had kind of hoped that maybe we were looking at hitting a peak there, but then a couple of days ago, we had our largest daily total of cases. So, um, at best, I think we're plateau rather than a peak.
Yeah.
Um, and that just kind of is what it is. And the reality thereafter is, is going to be that it's not going to be business as normal and probably, um, at least through well into the fall and, um, quite possibly through the end of the year. Uh, most likely, we're going to be looking at restrictions in terms of how many people can be in place, even after shelter in place ends. We are probably still going to be having the restrictions on, um, the number of people that can gather in, in one place. As a, as a fellow parent with two little boys at home that with two working adults working from home and trying to teach them, I, I definitely feel your pain and the craziness and the frustration on that, Kate. It's tough. It's, it's really tough and, um, there, it's tough for me to fault the schools too much, though in my darker moments, I'm very, very tempted to very explicitly do so sometimes. Um, but they didn't see this.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't want to come across as though I'm faulting the schools. I am a teacher too. I've had to go completely online and teach all of my classes online, see my schools through online. It's more I'm coming from it as somebody who teaches in entrepreneurship and I'm coaching small businesses who are dying. People are desperate. They have to fire their employees who are dear, they've become like family. And so to watch people just lose everything they have is, is heartbreaking. And then to hear my students' stories of their parents having COVID and having to care for their parents or both their, and you know, my, my students are from all over the world. Both their parents getting laid off and they have to help them navigate how to get any money to keep their house. It is, it is just heartbreaking. And then on top of that, to watch my kids not being properly educated when I'm trying to keep my student spirits up, trying to keep them going. So I don't want, I, I just don't want you to twist this and make, make it look like I'm negatively, you know, throwing shade on the teachers in Lake Bluff. I do not mean that.
You're frustrated and I get that.
It's a tough position for everybody.
Yes.
And we all need to step up. We all need to pivot. We all need to rise to the occasion.
Yes. And, um, I feel very good about all the work that the staff has, has done. Um, I do feel that we're, uh, what we've managed to, to do and pull together compares very favorably, uh, to libraries in the area with a lot more resources, um, to throw at this situation than, than we have. You know, the, the, the reality is that, um, unfortunately that, that gap as far as pulling resources together to make available to, to kids, is not a small one. And that, that is, uh, with the resources that the library has at its disposal, that's a challenge for us to really fill that. We're trying to do as much as we can, um, to offer to the, to the public. But, you know, really for our children's department staff, we are, you know, we've got two people at the moment, which is Eliza and Regina. And you know, there's, there's a limit to, to how much, um, we can do and, and how quickly with a small staff. I'm very positive and I, I like what we've done and I feel that we've done a lot more than those bigger libraries that I feel should have done, should be doing more. Uh, because they've got so many more people to throw at problems and so much more time. But a lot of that just is kind of what it is. I wish we could do more. You know, I, I wish that we had, um, a ton of things up there that we had been able to, to do that, but you know, the restrictions as far as what we've got are, are what they are.
Yeah, I think we need to move on in the meeting.
Okay.
Um, I think we've heard a lot of good points and food for thought. Um, I think everyone, I, I think everyone is working as hard as they possibly can. I'm not talking about any particular environment, but, um, everyone has got enormous challenges unlike anything that they can imagine in the past. So going forward, we just do the best we can. Um, on the issue of staff, what we were talking about here, which was, uh, your, I can't even quite remember what we were talking about here, but, uh, the, uh, part-time people and all that. Um, good reason to review it, good reason to talk through a little bit of HR, review who is on staff now. What's, who's contributing to the library in this interim period, who is not, and, and we can talk about that. So I think that's a point well taken and I think probably we should move on.
If I could just quickly add one other point, Eric, I think it might be worthwhile if we can have a meaningful conversation quickly enough to add this to the agenda for the joint HR finance committee meeting.
Yeah, I figured that we would. I figured that we'd add it there. Yeah. Okay. So barring any discussion, then I think we're moving on then to the, um, the change to the policy for renewals. Uh, the budget, uh, that was approved on March 31st, um, was, um, approved by the finance committee with the assumption that, uh, the implementation of auto renewal would, um, be a part of, the revenue that we would receive there, that that would, um, since auto renewals would have an impact on, on the, uh, what we would receive in terms of the fines, um, that was an assumption that was built in. Um, as this would be, as the auto renewals would be most easily implemented prior to returning, um, to the circulation of physical materials, uh, when we get to that point, that makes it something that would be, uh, worth consideration and discussion now, and hence why it's on the agenda for this evening. Uh, before putting it forward for consideration this evening, I did take the time to consider it. The auto renewals in light of the, the change situation. Um, I do think that the current situation, uh, recommends toward approval. The, um, the two points that really came across to me as far as, um, related to the current situation, two big areas of discussion in the, uh, director's, uh, group here in Lake County that I am a part of is, uh, trying to find as many ways as possible to help struggling. of is trying to find as many ways as possible to help struggling economic, families struggling economically in the community, really digging into the playbook as far as things that we did during the previous recession. And one of the things that libraries always try to do in that situation is find ways to improve access to what we offer and decrease barriers. And auto renewals, which do have the impact of making it easier to use the library, more convenient, would have that impact. The other item that has started coming up very regularly is that libraries in the area are increasingly discussing going cash-free and accepting payment only via credit. The thinking being that for the, for a situation where we're going to be looking to reopen during a pandemic, that handling of cash money is a potential disease transmitting issue. And one facet that plugs into that then is that the fewer number of small charges that you have for people, the less of a challenge that is if you're going to try and minimize how much cash handling you're doing. Both of those struck me as points that recommended, in addition to all of the other previous discussion items that had come on in previous meetings for auto renewals, that this is , I think, very much a policy change that we want to go ahead and make.
You're talking now, Justice Kathy.
Yes.
Hello? So you're just recommending auto renew at this time, which means you borrowed a book, it's due in two weeks or three weeks, and then auto renew it for that period of time?
Yeah, and it wouldn't be something that would go into effect until we, until we were open again and circulating physical materials. Right now, it's immaterial while we're closed because, you know, everything is extended out indefinitely. So there's no auto renewal because nothing's being renewed, except by library staff to push it out another three months as needed. But when we do reopen, that would be the point, that it would be the policy that would then go into effect and would be, I think, positive and helpful. And not just for the community, but it would also be a positive as far as making that transition, going back into a setup where we were circulating physical materials, which seems farther away by the day and can't wait to get there.
Yeah.
So Eric, do you want a word of motion?
I would recommend that the revised renewal policy be approved. And given the situation, I don't think we really need to specify a date because the date really is whenever we're able to reopen.
So upon reopening the library for circulation?
Yes.
Also move?
I still move.
All right, Kathy, I've got you.
And I'll second Scott.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll call the vote. Okay, Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Heintzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Stroh.
Aye.
Trustee Jackson.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
All right, unanimous vote, motion passes. Okay. That takes us to the always fun COVID-19 updates. So I had drafted and really, as I was drafting that, I ended up with really just a COVID-19 report plus director's report. COVID-19 is kind of very much consumed all, virtually every aspect of my job, as I think is often the case for just about everybody in any position these days. I mentioned that the projected peak for Illinois is now mid-May. The April 30th shelter-in-place, that's the point at which the shelter-in-place has been extended out to. Most likely, that'll be extended through the end of May. I think they're just playing cautious and waiting till, towards the last minute on that to see if there's anything substantial that changes. And barring something significant that does, that looks to be a certainty that that'll be extended through May. Schools, of course, are closed down. I have, unfortunately, to tie into the later statements as far as the likelihood of continuing the continued guidelines against, you know, not having gatherings larger than 10, the likelihood of that being in place. I have heard that schools are starting the discussion as to whether they will begin the next school year with in-person or with digital. So that's a few additional news pieces there. We are continuing to plan for various contingencies as far as what the next steps are going to look like, and increasingly seems certain that that next step really is going to be some sort of a curbside limited service where the space itself is not available with the gathering restrictions in place or has minimal availability, but that whether through some limited walk-up service or curbside service that we make the collection available to the patrons, obviously, there's a lot to work through there in terms of availability of PPE that we'll need to provide to staff, in terms of steps for handling of materials, which we're getting some good guidance on. But that does seem to be the most likely next step, and we are working on fleshing out the details for that so that when that becomes possible, we are ready to move on Thus far, you know, I just did want to throw out that I have not heard of or received word of any sort of serious push to get people, to get institutions reopened in Lake Bluff. Obviously, everybody is pretty worried and upset, but there doesn't seem to be any sort of a push being directed at the schools or the board, you know, trying to get them reopened. So with the protests, which I gather Illinois is going to be graced by its first anti-shelter-in-place protest on May 1st, something to look forward to. Thought I would mention that. Oh, and I did send out as well the abbreviated statistics report, which is focused on the website and the electronic resources. Do take a look at that when you get a chance, as you would expect. We're up quite a bit in terms of usage for those. So that is really updates on the always fun coronavirus and the director's report. Any questions on any of those items?
I do have one.
Fire away, Janie.
Sorry, Janie here. Have any idea when we'll be launching the new website?
I do not at this time. The, we had a hard date that had been set for March 31st. Unfortunately, that appears to have been pushed back, and I'm no longer certain when we're going to be getting that. Nikki Snoblen, who was responsible for the design on that, is a web manager for a number of other sites and for different organizations and companies, and has been very, very busy designing new features for those different organizations and businesses that meet their changed operating demands. I am hopeful that we will get it soon. Martha, I believe that you talked to Nikki today or yesterday?
Yeah, I spoke with her over email. It's getting there. I, I want to say by the end of the month, I think, but I'm also basing that on just my hopes. So I'll follow up with her and see if she can give me a better timeline. I know that she ran into some snags with getting our site up as well, so that might be delaying it as well.
Are you thinking maybe the end of April?
Yeah, but now I feel like I'm tempting fate, so...
Got it.
Yeah, and part of that was is that we added a number of different pages to the website ourselves, the COVID-19 information, you know, the seed request form, the temporary card application, and none of those things were included in the original website design, so she did need to get those added for us too. But fingers crossed it'll be soon. Wish I had a more firm date than that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
Any additional business to add or conduct before the meeting adjourns?
Eric, I just want to say thanks to everybody. I know this is the very trying times and juggling lots of hats at all odd hours of the day, so I appreciate all the work that everybody is putting into this. And I think communication is key, keeping in touch with one another and with the board and just letting us know and with the village, which you've been doing a great job with, which I know that itself is turning into a bit of a full-time job. So thank you for all of that and for pulling it together and for keeping us informed. I know, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, it's, it's been something. But, you know, it's tough, and, you know, I think I can speak for staff just to say that generally speaking, we're just trying to, you know, find everything that we can do, you know, and by and large, just wishing that we could do whatever. So if we don't have any additional business, then we would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I still move. This counts.
Yeah.
Second, John.
Thank you, John.
Okay, and I think we can, for an adjournment, just go with a good old-fashioned voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 8:09 p.m.